The City Planning Commission meeting tonight is Tuesday, April 15th. And if we could start by reviewing the minutes from the last meeting and see if there's any changes or notice anything that needs to be amended, if not, allows for an order. Excuse me, a motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from Tuesday, March 19th, 2014, as written.
Maybe we have a motion to approve the minutes as written from Commissioner Wallace. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so the motions and the minutes are approved. We only have one open public hearing on the agenda tonight. This is to consider a request from Roddingham Real Estate for a 5 percent variance to be issued pursuant to Austin City Code Section 11.41 subdivision 5. This is to be a deviation from the minimum 20 percent lot green space for properties that are located in a B2 community business district. And this relates to a proposed off-street parking lot expansion for the property that is currently located there.
Okay, just a couple of things with this petition variance. First of all, the application that was submitted to the city of Austin had the wrong legal description on it and it was publicized in the paper that way. Just for the record, I'd like to give the Planning Commission the correct legal. And there is a provision in Minnesota state statutes that allows for minimum errors and omissions as long as it, the correct address and everything was in the notice properly, but just the legal description that was wrong. But just for the record-
Can I work for a second?
Sure.
So then the paperwork that we have, the legal description that's in here, lots 6, 7, and 8, this is the correct legal description?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you look on the monitor, I'd like to just review the property under question. The site's located in a B2 community business district. It's located on the northeast corner of West Oakland Avenue and 9th Street Northwest. Just to give you a little history about the property, if you look at the green shaded area, that is the original Subway sandwich shop and also includes the previous off-street parking that they had for this business. If you look at the orange shaded parcel, that is actually what was once a single-family dwelling. The petitioner purchased that property for the expansion of this off-street parking lot. If you look at the surrounding land use, there's actually a combination of commercial and residential areas. If you look on the monitor, there's a purple line and that's actually a zoning boundary between the B2 community business district, which is on the Subway sandwich side of the line into the north. There's an R2 multifamily residence district. The, again, the zoning request is for a 5 percent variance from City Code Section 11.41 subdivision 5, which requires a 20 percent green space for developments in that zoning classification. Summary of the redevelopment site, the building size, that's not correct. The building size is actually 988 square feet. And if you look at the impervious area, it provides 85 percent coverage and, which would in turn provide 15 percent of green space. If you would look to the monitor, again, this proposed site, existing Subway store, there's a handicap stall, an accessible route to the main entrance to the restaurant. There are some landscaped areas in the southwest and northeast corners. There is a fence that has been provided to provide a buffer or screen between the adjacent residential properties. And in my report, I, this 988 square feet, there's a specific factor that gives you the number of required off-street parking stalls. And in just using that gross square footage, and I made a note of this in your backup material, that there is actually more off-street parking stalls than what the ordinance requires in this concept plan. An example of that, I calculated out a size of one of the 90-degree stalls and that would actually increase, in eliminating one of the extra stalls, it would increase the green space up to 16.8 percent. So I, they could, I mean, it's difficult or actually impossible for them to meet the green space requirement, but there are ways that they could eliminate a stall and increase the, what the green space would be.
But you're saying the most they can get to is 16 percent instead of the 20?
Well, I just did an example of eliminating one of the stalls on the north side of the property.
And then that would give them 14 stalls, which is what's required.
Actually, in doing a gross calculation, there are areas of the building such as storage rooms, kitchens, I mean, it's related to dining areas is what you do the calculation from. So, I mean, there's a possibility that two stalls could be eliminated. The other area that could be, and it's not shown here as being green space, there's an area just north of the Subway restaurant that appears to be an impervious area that could be converted to additional green space. So with that, I just wanted the Planning Commission to be aware of those issues. And in the backup material, there are specific guidelines by state statute when approving a variance that these items should be referenced as findings in any motion that the Planning Commission should give.
So let me ask you then, so what you're saying, if I'm hearing you right, is when I'm looking at the application for the planning request, they're saying here that the, basically it would be impossible for them to meet the 20 percent? But what you're saying is that there are ways that they can meet the 20 percent? If they-
Well, and what I did, I just took a gross square footage of the building, what the building footprint is. And in doing that, in calculating that out to the off-street parking requirement in our ordinance, the site plan shown actually provides one more stall than what is actually required. So if you would eliminate that extra stall, that would give you an increase of green space of 1.8 percent. If this area just north of the restaurant could be converted to a green space, that increase would be very similar to that, so-
So then they'd almost be at 20 percent?
They could be close, yes. I believe there's representatives from Subway that's here, if you would have any questions from them.
So if we were to look at this and we were, I don't know how the motion's going to come down, but we could make it a recommendation that the impervious be used as part of the recommendation for a motion, should it so happen, or?
An example would be if the Planning Commission would choose to make a motion to recommend to the council to approve a variance, but the off-street parking provided would meet the minimum requirement as per section 11.70 and the net calculation to the building floor area was to be utilized in determining the number of off-street parking stalls.
So you're saying it would be an option to reconsider the number of parking stalls using just the dining room square footage, but we don't know what that is right now?
That's correct.
But it would presumably be less than 14?
Possibly, yep. I've been there before, but I don't remember the specific outline of the floor plan.
Do the commissioners have any other questions?
And that's something that, you know, as far as that specific dimensions of a dining area or the ordering line or the service counter area, that's something that could be submitted by the petitioner prior to the council meeting.
Because, you know, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like they're very close to the 20 percent anyway.
Could be.
You know, so I don't know that they're really needing a full 5 percent, if I'm understanding this whole situation correctly, but it's really looking like it's kind of, if we reconfigured the building and the impervious areas, maybe 2 to 3 percent tops, maybe.
Yeah, and I think that if the Planning Commission would choose to recommend an approval of the variance, you know, I guess I would word it in a way to give it some flexibility to be, you know, to provide the off-street parking as calculated, you know, with a revised floor plan to determine that number. And anything greater than what's required would be converted to green space.
Okay. But we could also just deny the variance and say, go recalculate the number of parking spaces you need and redesign based on-
You could recommend the denial to the council.
We could table too, couldn't we? Can we table this issue based on the fact that we want more accurate building dimensions?
You could. I, instead of tabling it, I would continue the hearing to the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Which would eliminate us having to publicize it and mail out notices again.
Right.
What kind of notices did you, did you send out to neighborhood places?
Yep.
And did you get any response back?
I did not.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we'll be taking public comments as soon as we're done here. Thank you. Any other questions for Craig? Did you need to cover anything else, Craig?
No.
Okay. All right. If there's anybody from the public gally that would like to come up and make a comment, please approach the microphone and give us your first, last name and address, please.
Kenneth Thobel, we live at 209th Street Northwest, just to the north of this parking lot. We have no objections to the parking lot. We would just like to have a privacy fence on the north side of the property. And after hearing what he's saying, can they just put a little green space on the south side of that and, you know, give themselves a little more green space that way?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Would maybe a representative want to answer that question from?
I'm actually the contractor for Subway on this job.
His first and last name and address?
Brett Lunning. And my address is 75326 147th Street, Glenville, Minnesota.
Okay.
I just wanted to state, he was talking about maybe the spot on the north side of Subway.
There's a house, yeah, there's a house right just north of them and we're on across the street.
I'm talking about the spot right behind the building.
The area that he said was impervious area?
Yes.
Right.
That, I believe, is where the dumpster will be at, so there couldn't be green space there, because we have to have a spot for the dumpster. And we just thought it would be best on that side so that it's not showing like on Oakland Avenue, the main street.
Okay.
And then also, not that it's part of the green space actually, but the boulevard, instead of now being all cement, will all be sod and grass now. So that is going to add greenery to the property.
At least for a few weeks a year?
Right, right, right.
Is that something, Craig, that because it's City Boulevard and City Walk or whatever, that they can increase, they can include that as green space or not?
The public right-of-way area isn't considered in the calculation for green space, but I think the petitioner's doing that just in an effort to increase the appearance of the property.
Right. You know, because, you know, instead of it being all cement now, it will add green space to the property even though it's not considered to be part of the green space.
Mm-hmm.
And then also, I think the reason why he was saying that, you know, you can take out one parking spot, well, they bought, they bought the property as the intention of making more parking for customers because there's not very much to begin with. So to take away more parking, you know, it's like they spent all this money to get more parking space. And before, there was no green space at all. So I just wanted to clarify that, if I could.
The concern that I have is that when we look at the legal interpretation of what is a hardship, which is one of the things that we have to do when we look at a motion, either to approve or deny, is that I'm looking at this and saying, is this a hardship? The building has not increased in size. So the parking that's in place right now is the parking that has been approved and has been used. So they've been working with that since inception.
Right.
So it's hard to say that because they bought additional property, that they don't meet the 20 percent, that that's an undue hardship. It would be hard for me to meet that test.
Right.
So what we're trying to do is find as close to the 20 percent as we can, you know, at least that's my way of thinking. So you certainly want to make sure that you've got the parking space that you need.
Right.
So that's just, that's kind of how I'm thinking in terms of how we have to make a motion.
Uh-huh.
It has to be based on a legal interpretation of what we can and can't do, so.
Right. Okay, well, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody else like to come forward? Is that a yes or no? 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 Okay. Is there any other discussion that the commissioners would like to undertake?
It would seem that we probably need more information then if we're going to assess the-
How close we are. And that's certainly, like Craig had said, we can continue this motion so that we can get exact measurements, which may be to their benefit, so, you know, that's part of the discussion we can have, or if someone is ready and willing to make a motion, I can certainly call for a motion.
Based on lack of information, I would make a motion to deny the request at this point in time as a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny from Commissioner Skolicki. Do I have a second?
A second, Nat.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Helly. All those in favor say aye.
Just as a point of discussion before we-
Yes.
Are we denying it on the basis of opening up again for further, are we, the recommendation is to the city council and for them to-
No, I believe that a denial is a denial, is it not?
That's a recommendation that will go to the council.
Yes.
It would still be reviewed by the council.
Okay, and so you want to do that as opposed to continuing the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Just thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure. Thank you, Commissioner Skolicki. So the motion on the table then was for a denial, and then that will go to recommendation to the council as a denial, but they will then undertake that, at which time you may have more information for them. We have a second from Commissioner Helly. All those in favor say aye.
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 By hands, please. Okay, so that's four. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, two. Okay, so motion to deny passes, four to two. So do you understand then what that means as far as, okay, so the motion will still go, well, Craig, you can explain it if you want, but what we're trying to do is give you some options to come back and give us some more tight numbers or give the council some tighter numbers, so that they know exactly what they're dealing with, and then they can, they can give you a cognizant motion at that point.
And possibly address the fence issue. I can understand his viewpoint, especially with the dumpster back there.
Yeah, we don't want to look at the parking lot and the dumpster.
And a dumpster. I-
Headlines and cars, aye.
Right, right. So this will give you a little more time to get your numbers together.
Yeah, there, just to answer the question on the fence, there is a development standard that requires that, and the contractors are aware of that.
Putting greenery on the fence? I just told him, I'm like, I don't want to look out my window, look at Subway parking lot. I don't want to get one up there.
But you also can't put the fence over the other side of the 50 percent.
Well, you can put up a 30-inch-high fence up to the sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah. And this, this recommendation that the Planning Commission just met will go to the city council on the 21st, on next Monday, at 5:30.
So that'll give you some time to pull together your numbers. Okay. All right, so that's the public hearing now. On other business, we have a review of the housing registration ordinance that you wanted to update us on.
Recently, staff has had ongoing discussions with the city council and different ideas as far as what to do with a housing ordinance which could regulate all residential structures in the community or just rental properties. And things that we've looked at is, do we implement a program where there's scheduled inspections, there's fees that are associated with owning rental properties in the community or in another direction where there would just be a registration ordinance, so we would have contact information from either rental property owners or their managers. In going through that, we've looked at programs that other neighboring communities have had. We've looked at staffing requirements, budgets, and there has been a lot of opposition to adopting a full-fledged inspection rental ordinance from the landlords in the community and the landlord association. Just stating that, you know, they agree that there is a need for improvement of some of the residential properties in the community, but there's also rental property owners that do take care of their properties and they feel that they are being kind of victimized by fees for something that they're doing in an orderly way, but paying for others' faults. So with that, we met with staff and a couple of the council members and just came up with what we feel is a workable solution for the community initially, where we would have a rental ordinance for registration, that was in your backup material. This is actually an ordinance that was drafted back in 2011. And city staff with that, once a registration is made, the rental property owner or landlord or even tenants would be required to attend an educational program that would be put on by various city departments. One would be my department, the fire department, police department, and probably the HRA as more of an educational offering to make sure they're aware of what we as city staff expect with this ordinance, some of the problems that we experience in taking housing complaints, and also how we can remedies or improve on those. So once a registration is made, the attendance is made by those associated with that rental property or residential property, they would then receive a certificate. And there could be situations where that certificate could be revoked, or if you look at any ordinance within the community, a violation of that ordinance is a misdemeanor charge. And council has given me direction, if this ordinance is approved, that we are to aggressively issue summons for those violations, more so on repeated offenders. So with what I've given you here in your backup material, it's, you know, a very similar layout to our ordinances, our regulatory ordinances, with the purpose of the ordinance is, I mean, just to improve the housing stock in the community. There's definitions that define various phrases or words within the ordinance. There's a scope to it. There's a provision where if it's a, some of our rental properties in the community are not owner-occupied and they do not live within the community of Austin. There's a provision there that would require that either the owner or manager would have to live within one hour of the community. There's a provision for specific-
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Is that something that they looked at where, you know, maybe the owner lives in Wisconsin and so they don't want to live in Austin, but they're willing to get a property manager? Is that something that has been talked about in lieu of the owner actually having-
Yeah, it's either owner or manager.
Owner or manager, okay.
And if you look at, and I don't have the exact language, but if you look at subdivision 5B, in that first part of that section, it says, upon completion of the registration form, what there would be added to that is, would be also the attendance or going through the educational program provided by the city. Once that has been completed, then there would be a certificate issued for that property. Also, in the ordinance or along with the ordinance, there is a registration form. And one thing that this would provide for not only my departments, but some of the emergency-type departments, is creating a database that, not only for my department, but there's many times, the police department will get a call to a domestic-type thing at a rental property, and it's very difficult to make contact with owner or the person responsible for that. So I guess if the Planning Commission is in agreement to the concept of this registration ordinance and, for the most part, how it's been drafted, I would just request a recommendation of the council for that.
I had a question. At the very beginning, you were saying that some of the objection was that there are good landlords out there and they feel as if they're being singled out with registration fees or whatever. Has the council or whoever's looking at this ordinance, have they decided or thought about grandfathering in some landlords who maybe have not had any kind of problems or, you know, hassles within the last, say, two years or something like that, that maybe they could be grandfathered in at that point? Or is that not on the table for discussion?
There's been a lot of things talked about with the responsible property owners, and it's just, you know, we might have close to 2,000 rental units in the community, and it would be very difficult to, I mean, you'd have to produce a criteria as to being a responsible owner versus unresponsible. And, you know, I, I mean, I've been at meetings where unresponsible rental property owners have been there, but according to them, they're, you know.
Well, that's why I was saying, could there be a timeframe on violations or something like that? I mean, it's just, I guess they can talk about it, but-
I mean, the way it's set, there isn't specific, I mean, there's a section in our city ordinances that specifically states, any violation of a city ordinance is subject to a misdemeanor charge. So there isn't anything special about this ordinance. I mean, that's already in the books. I guess the policy that the department would make is, you know, we get a complaint, we conduct an inspection. If the inspection doesn't get resolved, that could then force us to write out a court summons or a citation. Or if there's a repeated violation, then, you know, we would then also issue a summons for it. for that.
What is the worst could happen there? Just say, for instance, because I know there's a lot of landlords in town. What is the worst that could possibly happen? You get a citation, you go to court, the guy doesn't show up, guy or gal doesn't show up. What happens? Where does that go from there?
Typically, there's an arraignment hearing. You know, if they plead not guilty to it, then there's an actual, and maybe Craig would be the more appropriate one to explain that procedure.
A citation under our city ordinance is a misdemeanor, so it's treated like any other criminal proceeding that's a misdemeanor. So it goes through the process where there's an initial hearing, either a plea of guilty or not guilty, then scheduling it on for a trial. There would be a trial, there would be a verdict, there would then be a sentencing phase. All misdemeanors have a cap as far as the amount of time and the amount of fine that can be applied. The judge has full discretion to determine what sort of punishment fits the crime, so to speak. So for issues like this, it would likely be a fine that was deemed by the judge to be enough incentive for future compliance. I think your question was, what if the out-of-town owner doesn't respond? Technically, you could, the court could issue a warrant to have that person brought in. It's fairly unlikely that the system would devote the resources necessary to extradite someone from another state in for a proceeding like this, because it's a misdemeanor.
I'm just, you know, questioning, again, we were going from the balance of the good landlords to the bad landlords, you know, how are we going to actually turn these bad landlords into good landlords, you know?
If possible.
Yeah.
I think part of the effort here is to have someone who is more local, who is responsible, which would increase the likelihood that you can reach out and get the person, person's attention at least, whose job it is to keep the property in compliance.
And that's fine. The only issue I'm going to have with that is that person who's the manager is not going to be funding it. They're going to say, you know what, I'm just a manager, I don't put up the bills, I don't put out the money to fix this, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Jeff, right.
Of the two thousand, you mentioned two thousand rentals that we have in the city, like, how big is the problem? I mean, is it, how many, how many calls, how many complaints come forward?
We, as far as housing complaints, I believe this past year, we had a total of over six hundred complaints with combined housing complaints and land use complaints. For this past year, I think it was just over a hundred housing code complaints, and about seventy-five percent of those were rental units. The rest were owner-occupied.
But because we're on a complaint-based system, there's no way of knowing how many units are out of compliance, no one's complained, no one's inspected.
Typically, when we get a complaint on a rental property, as far as the inside conditions, there's a falling out between the renter and the landlord, and they're moving out the next day and trying to get back to the property owner. But they're, obviously, the property owner isn't going to call in about a complaint. I mean, we receive complaints about the exterior condition of a building, and, you know, those can be done by staff or neighbors or somebody driving by, just like a land use violation. But I, I mean, I've, I've been a number of different properties, and, I mean, I truly think that there's a need for a tool to improve on the housing stock.
Is there any, on the other side of the coin, you know, as far as the owner or the, of the property, you want a good renter, you know, is there anything to protect the owner, I'll say? In other words, you know, if they have a lease agreement, that would be one way, I would think, or a deposit, something like that. But this would not apply to any of, any in that direction, is that correct? In terms of the-
You're saying landlord, tenant.
Protecting the owner.
The owner's property.
Owner of the property.
The owner of the property, if there's a citation issued, it's not to the renter. It's to the owner of the property.
You're basically saying, making the owner more responsible, is what you're saying.
Correct. Yeah. So I guess, on the other side of that, the rental property owner is responsible to monitor that property. I mean, and it's not only housing code-related things, it's properties that don't have garbage service, there's vehicles parked all over the yard, there's, I mean, a number of different things. Those are more land use issues, but-
But that is the owner's responsibility, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Craig, in the housing discussion meeting minutes from March fourteenth, there's a couple line items pertaining to safety in regard to detectors, both smoke and carbon monoxide. How would safety be impacted by this ordinance? I mean, are detectors currently required for rentals? And if not, would this have any bearing on that?
Actually, any rental now, there's a fire code that actually requires that CO detectors are required in every rental unit. I mean, if we get a complaint on a, whether it's a rental unit or a owner-occupied property, if there's not detectors in the bedrooms, hallways, every floor, that's something that we cite on a correction requirement.
Yeah, that's under the fire code.
Correct.
But we don't know how many units don't comply right now.
Right, yeah. I mean, the fire department currently does scheduled inspections on multifamily units, but it's not in the units themselves, it's in the corridors to make sure that they have proper exiting, that, you know, they have, if the number of units requires an alarm system, that type of thing is what they verify.
It basically would be up to the tenant to call in and say that there's a violation of the fire code in their apartment, to bring it to the attention of, you know, whoever.
Yeah, and we just actually had one of those not that long ago, where actually the property manager called and complained because, you know, he was concerned about some life safety issues.
Yeah. I, I have to say, from my perspective, I've never lived in a city that didn't have a registration or a housing ordinance, and I did property management in California, so a lot of this stuff is kind of like the course of business. So for those landlords who are good landlords, I would assume if I had property in this town, I'd be a good landlord, having to register and pay for a registration fee or whatever is going to be the cost of doing business, and it's going to be important. And like you said, if there's a domestic or something like that, this helps to ensure that we know how to get a hold of the owners and that they're doing the right thing. So I really only think that this could be a good thing for the city to tighten something up like this and get it on paper, get an ordinance together. That's my opinion, anyway.
Yeah, I think the problem with the complaint-based system is that we know we have vulnerable populations, people with mental health issues, substance abuse, new immigrants who aren't going to be familiar with the system or able to use the complaint-based system. And so even though there's a perceived burden on one side of the fence, there's also the vulnerable population that the community needs to address their needs as well.
Craig, do you have any idea how many new landlords we get in a year in the community?
I have no idea.
I'm just wondering, you know, I think a lot of tenants, they need to have references in terms of sometimes getting accommodations. I'm wondering if we could do something for the landlords in terms of requiring some references for any other properties they might have outside of Austin.
Yeah, I mean, there's, this effort, if, you know, and hopefully it's successful, you know, we are looking at trying to improve the housing stock in the community. There has to be housing provided for everybody in the community, and that housing is obviously going to be at different levels. It's, if this ordinance gets adopted, it's not going to be, we're going to start enforcing it in June and come next fall. It'll, I mean, this is going to probably be multiple-year process to get everybody registered, to get everybody educated on it, and hopefully from that, both the exterior and interior portions were, I mean, I personally am more concerned about the non-structural life safety things like detectors and exiting than I am that it's painted pretty and flowers out front, that type of thing. But in, in the big picture, having some type of enforceable tool is, you know, a great, you know, economical tool for, for the community, or it's, I mean, there's a lot of people that judge a community by, you know, driving through residential areas and looking to see what type of condition the community's in, so.
And this ordinance too, I mean, it's specifically for a residential rental property owner and manager registration. There's, what you're saying, there's definitely work that needs to be done for tenant rights and education along that area, and I know that's something that the city has been looking at and has been addressing, so, because that's really what you're saying, is that the tenants themselves also need an education process, they need to know what their rights are, they need to know how to report, they need to know how safe they are in terms of the legal process when they do that. And those are all things that every city should have, but you have to take the first step, and you have to start, and quite honestly, I think this is a good start.
Well, there is a rental association, I mean, you know.
Right, and I know they're the ones that have been really making strides in addressing that, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. There's an actual website that a potential renter can go to and so forth like that as well.
Can you share with us what that is, because it would be-
I should know that as a landlord, but I can't tell you the exact site.
I'm a bunch of other spotted, I'm sorry.
Yes, you did. If you had warned me, I could have brought that one.
Sorry about that.
There is, I mean, we adopted a good neighborhood policy, I mean, we have handouts, I think that's on our website. There's also a DVD that-
You may have a link, actually, on your website to the rental.
On the website. Since I know I've been through it, I've read-
I think Jeremy Carolyn is very involved in that as a landlord himself.
Yep, yep. But there's a, there's a DVD video that, and it's done in, I don't know how many languages, but that was, if it's not on there, it's supposed to be put on there, on the website, so.
Sir, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, yes, I do.
Can you come up to the microphone and give us your first and last name and your address?
My name is Murv Sawyer, and I'm originally from Austin.
What is your address, Murv?
What's that?
What is your address?
I have two addresses.
You can just give us one.
The property we're talking about is the O. H. Heggie property, and I am being sued, and it started last fall, but I'm trying to settle it, and this tenant wound up with bedbugs. And my neighbor is Deborah Heisey, and I know she is one of your social workers, and I know of others that are social workers. And I also know that the county hires so-called professional guidance for people under their certain money situation, and they help these people pay their rent. And in this case, I had a person who has, was recommended to me, and I got along with her fine. She happens to be a dark person from Chicago, and I also had another one from Chicago that was Negro.
Murv, can I interrupt you just for a second? Can I interrupt you for just a sec? Does your testimony or what you're going to say have anything to do with the motion before us?
The, I'm being sued by Anna Lisa Wardley.
Okay, but we don't want to get into personal things that may be getting us into an area that we can't speak about tonight, so that's why-
Well, I guess it's all because of this landlord versus tenants.
Okay.
And this has been brought up.
Okay, but we're talking about a motion tonight for a resolution in front of the council, which I don't need to cut you off, I'm just wondering if there might be someone from the city who you can talk to about your grievances that may be a more appropriate warrant.
Well, you'll just see it in my, in the court eventually.
Okay.
I'll put it that way. And you'll be able to see, even in the reruns of the court system, where they can be incarcerated in an orange jumpsuit and still proceed with accusations against their so-called former landlord.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
And thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, any other, if not, then I believe that the motion before us is, yes, go ahead.
I would just add that when we were talking about the potential penalties for landlords, that the prosecutor has a great deal of discretion, and if the fine is below a certain amount, that can be certified as a petty misdemeanor rather than a misdemeanor.
Great, thank you for bringing that up. It's nice to have an attorney on the commission. Okay, so, um-
Got one more.
Do we have another? Yes. Was it in relation to what we're discussing here in terms of the motion before the council?
It is.
Okay. First and last name, please, and your address.
My name is Dan. I live immediately south of the Roosevelt Bridge.
What is your last name and address?
I live in constant, chronic, ongoing fear, so I prefer to not give my address or my last name.
Okay.
I've lived here twenty-one-plus years in this residence. I'm happy that the commission is considering this ordinance. It's a long time coming. Forgive me, I've not read the backup data that you have before you. I just simply am a resident and a homeowner, and I want to offer a couple of observations. I would, I would hope that as the Planning Commission, you would consider seriously the density of the, of the volume of rental properties to the single-family homes. Where I live, fifteen of the twenty closest houses are now, now, not homesteaded. This brings a population that has a high turnover, and it brings ongoing, recurring, similar issues. Those issues in the past have included the SWAT team directly at the house across the street from me, twice, guns drawn. I have snuck out of my home in the middle of the night repeatedly, frequently, and often, back in two thousand two, to identify the make, model, and license number of the occupants visiting a residence. At the time, it was then the largest meth bust in the history of the city. So I see all this as a safety issue. And I would, and I also see it as a landlord responsibility issue from the, from the standpoint that if any of you were drunk, and you went into a bar and were served, it is likely, but not a hundred percent likely, that the person who served you additional alcohol would be held liable. Similarly, with a landlord. I would encourage you to limit the number of occupants per rental unit, because it is my direct, ongoing, recurring experience that many, many people at times live in one unit. This is problematic. To the issue that Steve Keim raised regarding a misdemeanor, years ago, I submitted to the city attorney draft ordinances regarding the noise, thumper cars, if you will. I would, while it's great that that's, the misdemeanor is an option, I'm not sure how enforceable it would be and whether or not the city has the, the desire to issue a misdemeanor in the case of a violation of an ordinance. in the case of a violation of an ordinance. I would encourage landlords to require garbage service. Frequently, repeatedly, and often, once again, in my part of, of the city, I have seen people store wet household garbage all winter, and then haul it out in the spring. This is a health issue.
Dan, in terms of requirements and things that you're, we're kind of getting out into the weeds a little bit, but what I'm wondering from you...
I apologize.
No, that's okay. It happens all the time, and that's why I'm saying, I think maybe the comments that you have, which are very good, Jeremy Carolyn would probably be a really good person for you to get in contact with, so that you can give him some of this feedback.
Thank you for the suggestion. About eight days ago, I submitted to the rental coordinators for this process, the city commissioners, Judy Unright, and who's the second one? One of the other city commissioners was, the two of them were identified to carry the water for this particular topic.
Jeff Austin, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. And I submitted a 12, a 12-item list of concerns and complaints.
Okay, good.
And requested response. Unsurprisingly, I received none. Earlier, I submitted the identical information to Craig Owen.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll try to, try to get a little bit more on track, but the issue seems to be, who's going to be responsible for the behavior and the conduct of the occupants? Well, I can tell you that I am tired of paying the price for the behavior of other people. I live in fear. 10 minutes to three last Saturday morning, three feet between my house and the garage, I was awakened by a man in between my house and my garage. The police couldn't find him. So I'm saying that the density issue, I think, relates directly to the motion that you are, that you are considering.
Well, and I understand what you're saying in terms of the density, and also the number of people that are in each dwelling, and I know that's something that can be addressed legally, so I appreciate your comments.
Well, it, it may have the capacity to be, to be addressed, but it has not been addressed.
Right, and I understand your concern.
Okay, okay.
I think very much. It is on the record, so thank you very much.
I appreciate your ear. I apologize for not being better informed. Thank you for listening.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other comments? Okay, so the, the motion that is before us, then, is whether or not we will make a motion to the city council to recommend further, further, what are we looking for? Just, we're not looking for them to approve the ordinance, or are we looking for them to, because we're looking to either make or not make a recommendation that in its current form is something that we wish to see go forward. Is that correct?
Correct.
Good. So, did you all hear that?
If we can just figure out how to make a motion now.
The motion is to either recommend to the council to move forward with the current language and verbiage as it stands, or to not move it forward. So at that point, then I'll ask for a motion.
Well, it sure sounds like we, yeah, it's definitely needed. I would make the motion that we move forward with the verbiage that has currently been set forth, yeah, in hopes that we can accomplish our...
Okay, so we have a motion before us to recommend to the city council to continue with the current verbiage of the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. So the first was from Commissioner Keim, and the second is from Commissioner Hurst. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so that's a recommendation to the council to move forward. All right, any other business?
The only thing I have was, the last month, the planning commission reviewed a tree mitigation plan for the Hormel Institute expansion, and there was some question about the tree count and tree removals. I went out and verified that count, and there was about, I think originally, the report that we got from a consultant, 103 trees on the area, or the scope of work area for the parking expansion. In going out, there's a specific qualifying factors for actually counting a tree as a tree. About 50 of the trees that they counted were just lined fence, overgrown weed, so, you know, it would be a plus for the community to have those gone. So the city council acted on that, and the accurate numbers were used in their motion, so I just wanted to update the council, or the planning commission on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Anything else? Okay, at this point, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I heard Mr. Skolicki first, so Commissioner Skolicki, I'll give you the motion then to adjourn. A second, please?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wallace. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, we are adjourned at 6:27.